Ask everybody to rise for the pledge of allegiance. And Mr. Kylie, if I might, would you please lead us in the pledge?
Sure. The pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. This is the regularly scheduled meeting for August 16th. First item on the agenda, item number three, is to consider and act upon the minutes of the regular meeting for June 21st, 2017, which was postponed from -- that can't be right.
They weren't attached.
Oh, all right, so the minutes were postponed, the approval of the minutes was postponed. I'm going to say the meeting couldn't have postponed from July 12th. And the minutes for the regular meeting of July 12th, 2017, even though it says 21-07. We are having an interesting situation with dates here. Is it okay to take these two together?
Yes.
May I have a motion to accept?
Make a motion.
A second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And if we could correct that, just that one typo on there, that would be good. All right, next up, some very special recognition for Fairfield resident being appointed President of the National PTA, Jim Akamondo. And Jim, I'm going to ask you to come up and fill us in on what's going on. It's my understanding you are not only the first person from Fairfield, but in fact, the first person from the glorious state of Connecticut to win this honor.
That's true. Sure. No, thank you, Mike. I appreciate the opportunity to come before you guys. Yes, first for Connecticut, first for Fairfield, of course, and the third male in 120-year history. So let's just, let's hope that we can keep up that tradition. But yes, it's, National PTA is 120 years old this year. I am their 55th president, and I started when my son actually was in first grade at Hollen Hill. So, and it's kind of appropriate today that today he's 22 years old, and it's his first day work. And he's actually working in the Washington DC area in Reston, Virginia. So today is his first day being employed, full-time job, once he graduated from University of Richmond. So it's actually a great day to receive a proclamation. And Mike, you also gave my son a proclamation for when he became Eagle Scout at First Church in Troop 82. So now I can actually say to him that I've got a special day also, so that he doesn't hold that just exclusively for him. But it was a great day for us, so I really appreciate the recognition from our town. This is where it all began. It all began in Fairfield, and I've had the wonderful opportunity to actually follow my kids through all their school years in public education. You know, Wendy, my wife over here, is a second-grade teacher, and she started out at McKinley. She had 10 years in California teaching in San Diego, where you said you were from. And also, oh, not from, but you lived there. I know you're a Fairfielder. And also, now she's been at Osborne Hill for many, many years. And so my, both my kids went to elementary school at Hollen Hill. And then my son went to Tomlinson. And then with redistricting, my daughter went to Woods. So we actually had opportunities to see both schools. And both ended up at Ludlow. So my son was a 2013 graduate, 2017 at Richmond, employed fully right now today. And my daughter's got one more year, incoming senior. And it's looking for colleges, so you know, you know what that's all about. And so we have one more to get through. So it started at Hollen Hill, and I was able to accompany them throughout the classroom years, and then became President of Ludlow High School, President of the PTA Council for Fairfield, President for the State of Connecticut, and then ultimately President for National PTA. I did not aspire for this position, but you know what it is, you sometimes get hooked. And next thing you know, you have an office in Washington DC that you frequent, frequent very much now. This is like a full-time position, full-time unpaid position, but full-time nonetheless. It's very fulfilling. It's at least two to three weeks out of the month for duties. And mostly at this level, you're working with our 54 Congresses around the world. We do Department of Defense schools throughout Europe, Pacific, and the Americas. We work with our 50 states, of course. We're in Puerto Rico, Washington DC, and the Virgin Islands. And of course, we're lobbying all the time on the Hill and working with our new Secretary of Education and the executive branch of the White House. So it's fun.
Yeah, as a Hollen Hill alum, I'm great to hear that you started your career in PTA in Hollen Hill.
Well, it's our backyard fence school, so it's right there. So it's hard not to.
But one of the things I've heard is about the Fairfield PTA as one of the larger ones in the state and one of the more active.
Yeah.
Can you give us a little background on the Fairfield PTA and what generates this?
Yes, absolutely. So there's approximately 40,000 members in Connecticut for PTA, and 20% of those come from Fairfield. Any given period, actually, it's close to the 25% of all members in Connecticut come from Fairfield.
Wow.
So we, for a while there, we were actually one-on-one, 10,300, 10,400 students and about 10,500 parents who were actually members. So we're a little down now, we're in about 8,500, 9,000 members for Fairfield, but that's an ebb and flow, but still about 23, 24% of total membership in the state of Connecticut. So Fairfield is actually the model. I know this is being recorded, but I'm a Fairfield citizen, so I'm really proud to say that. You know, we've got literally, all 16 schools have PTAs, as well as we have one of the, probably the best, I'm going to say the best council within the state. With that, we also have regional representatives that roll up into our board at Connecticut PTA. And then, of course, we have representatives from Connecticut PTA on national. So from a small state of Connecticut, and I mean small, we are considered a petite state in the size of the 54 Congresses. We actually have a Board of Director, the President, and we have two committee members that represent Connecticut that sit at National PTA. So Connecticut is well represented at National PTA, as well as we do a heck of a job lobbying and advocating for our issues in education, public education in Hartford. We've got a great team up in North Haven as well, so.
Great. Any comments from my colleagues?
How long is the term?
Two years. So it's two years as President-elect. I was on the board for two years. You know, I took, I took an opportunity to run actually from the floor. I was not the slated candidate, so I fast-tracked it. And so I, two years on the board, two years as President-elect, and then two years as President. Normally, it takes a little bit longer than that, Chris, to come on board. But during my President-elect years, I was able to write the strategic plan for National PTA, which was one of my duties, which was just terrific. Ended up doing two educational studies for that period of time. Did them both on the relevancy of PTA and then more family engagement, if you will, which became one of our five pillars in a sense of our strategic plan, as well as lobbying directly on Capitol Hill. Got to meet the President a few times. So it was, it was an exciting President-elect year, and I'm hoping that the two years as President are as meaningful. I think they will be.
Kevin, you have any thoughts?
Yeah, Jim, congratulations.
Thanks, Kevin.
I mean, I can't think of a better candidate for this position, locally, statewide, nationally. You've done a wonderful job here for the, over two decades. I've had the luxury of working with you for most of those years. And it's a credit to you and everyone else in our town that we have that 10,000 or 8,000 members that belong to the PTA here in town. I mean, we do set the standard for this state.
We do.
And for any place across the country for parent participation and for involvement at every level, at every school. It is, it is a wonderful testament to the hard work you and everyone else has done throughout the years, so thank you so much.
No, thank you. Advocacy's job, one. We try to enhance the education for all kids, so it's terrific. Well, thank you guys very much. And Mike, I'm going to give you a copy of what I gave to my board this year. It actually has our mission values and our vision for National PTA. It also has the strategic plan and a synopsis of the two studies I have. I laminate these so that all of our board members, 29 board members, will never forget. I also have pictures of children with our mission embedded in it, so if we ever get distracted, we focus on the visuals, et cetera. And last but not least, of course, we have approved board norms, so that you always have the proper decorum and etiquette when you're actually working with your boards throughout the town. So here's your--
Thank you.
Personal copy.
National PTA personal copy, Mike.
All right, Jim, and thank you. And again, I'm both thrilled at the statement that our local PTAs make by having that kind of involvement, that kind of active citizens involved in our school. And I think when I look at Fairfield, when you talk about being a volunteer-driven community, when you look at that as a great example of energy in terms of going through that, it's phenomenal.
Well, thanks. Well, you know, we always have folks come out to every meeting that you could possibly imagine, so we have a great ton of advocates, but thanks, Mike.
We do have a proclamation from the town for you. I'm not going to read it all, but it does detail the myriad of your accomplishments.
Thanks.
But I will come to my favorite part down here at the end in terms of honoring you, which is, "Now therefore, I'm Michael C. Tetra, First Selectman of the Town of Fairfield, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, August 16th, 2017, as James L. Akamondo Day throughout the Town of Fairfield."
You know, that's right.
And gentlemen, let's go hand this to the--
Thank you.
Come on. And why don't you stand over here so we can get a picture of you.
Thanks so much, man. I appreciate that. Kevin, thanks.
All right, here. Give the medal, sir.
All right, in the middle.
Absolutely. I'll show this to my son, of course.
He had his day, now you have yours.
You know, I'm going to change all my shorts for you, Mike. Right back into it. You guys take care of, thanks so much.
All right.
Bye-bye.
That's amazing, 8,000?
I had no idea.
In our PTA. 20% of the state total for PTA.
25%. Mike, push it to 25.
25%. Look, nobody on this board is going to disagree with you.
Take however, whatever you can get.
I always assumed all the other towns were as active.
So did I.
Every town I've worked in, the PTA's been--
But if 25% of the state total comes from Fairfield, that's dramatically more active--
Right.
--than any other town, dramatically more. That is phenomenal and a tremendous statement to our parents that they're that involved. All right. Let's see, next up, I do want to, one adjustment in the agenda, item number 14, which is the item continuing update on the special election. I have pulled that from this meeting agenda. Based on the size of the agenda, the fact there's probably going to be more to discuss in September as the updates come through, and we really had a substantial discussion on that at our last meeting. So next up are some resignations, item number five. This is for information only, but from the Strategic Plan Committee, Thomas Montelli, a Democrat from 550 Penfield Road, did resign, and the resignation date was July 31st, 2017. Moving on to appointments, to here consider and act upon the following appointments. Fair TV, we have two. I believe Mr. Jones is here, and Mr. Chandler was stuck in traffic, and I don't know if he got freed up in time to get here. Would it be okay to take these both at the same time, or do you want to do them one at a time?
I'm okay with both at the same time.
Sure. All right. Then, for the Fair TV Commission, to here consider and act upon the following appointments for the Fair TV Commission. This requires unanimous Board of Selectment vote and a majority RTM approval. First is Todd Chandler, Republican, 65 Hilltop Drive, for a term of 7/17 to 7/20. And this is filling a vacancy for McKay Jamison, whose term expired. Second, Andrew D. Jones, Democrat, 1046 Old Field Road, for a term 7/17 to 7/20. And this is to fill a vacancy for Tracy Minsky, whose term expired. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
Just quickly, these are both highly qualified candidates, and they're going to be great additions to Fair TV. Plenty of media experience, good solid business careers, and I want to thank you for stepping up to volunteer on this committee for our town.
Chris?
I want to thank Mr. Jones for introducing himself today. I did review your resume. I look forward to your contributions to make on the Fair TV Commission, so thank you.
And again, I had a chance to talk extensively with both candidates. I was very impressed with the backgrounds and skills they bring, as well as their willingness to serve. And Fair TV has certainly become a valuable staple of our local democracy in terms of showing our public meetings in work and showing everything from the Board of Ed, to planning and zoning, to the Board of Finance, RTM, and Board of Selectment. So I'm thrilled that two folks with this kind of background are stepping up here to serve. Any further comments?
Ready to vote?
Are we ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations, it is unanimous as it was required to be. Mr. Jones? Very good, very good. And Mr. Chandler out there, if you hear this, this is for you. All right. There we go. That's, those two. Next up, the Land Acquisition Commission. This is to here consider and act upon the following appointment of Tara Holly, Republican, 159 North Cedar Road, for a term of 11/15 to 11/19. And she is moving from alternate to full member, and this is to fill a vacancy by Alan Levin, who resigned. May I have a motion to accept?
Make a motion.
A second?
Second.
Any comments from the board? I don't believe she's here. I think that the Fair TV Commission folks were the only appointments that were able to make it today. Okay?
I'd like to thank Alan for his service. And I know he stepped down for unfortunate reasons, so I'd like to thank him, and I look forward to Tara stepping in.
Yep, I think that, Kevin?
No, I certainly agree with those comments. Mr. Timmyack?
Yep, and I concur fully. It certainly, land acquisition is not one of our more active commissions, but also very important. If you look at our history of open space, that's gotten more challenging every year as there's less open space in trying to figure out how to create more for the town. So I think it's a very important commission, and we have folks step up on that. So that's it from here. Any further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Next up, to here consider and act upon the appointment of, to the Police and Fire Retirement Board, of Bruce Ryan, Republican, 439 Beach Road, for a term of 11/16 to 11/19. And this is to fill a vacancy for James Takame, whose term expired. May I have a motion to accept?
Make a motion.
A second?
Second.
All right, any comments?
I've known Bruce for several years now. I think he's going to be good in the role, and look forward to his contributions.
Mr. Kylie?
Completely agree. Bruce has been a volunteer for our town for many years. I've gotten to know him. I spoke to him about this position personally, and he will make a great addition to the, to the pension board.
Yep, I think, I got to know Bruce during his term on the RTM, and we had a chance to talk about a number of issues that came up through that. And certainly, looking at his background, I think he'll be a great addition to the pension board. Any further discussion?
Uh-uh.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you. And then next up, for the Strategic Plan Commission, to here act and consider upon the appointment of Justin C. Thomas, Republican, 415 Olpost Road, and this to fill a vacancy for Thomas Montelli, who resigned. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved. Go ahead.
Make a motion.
A second?
Second.
All right, any discussion?
I look forward to having Justin on the board, Strategic Plan Committee. I know that I've talked to John Winn, and the group seems to be moving forward at a good pace right now. We're going to get an update from them later on, so I hope he fits in very well.
Mr. Kylie?
Yes, Mr. Thomas has a great background, and I know he'll do a great job on the board.
He was one of the original group that applied to be a member of the Strategic Plan Commission Committee, and I had a great conversation with him back then. We just didn't have enough seats to fill at that time, so I'm excited that he gets a chance to step up and replenish the ranks, if you will. I do want to thank Mr. Montelli for originally signing up, and I'm sorry that he did have to resign because things changed for him. But I look for getting him further involved in other areas of the town as his schedule and time permits. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. Then, and that leads in perfectly to item number seven, which is to hear an update from the Strategic Plan Committee. Mr. Winn, if you'll introduce yourself, then please give us an update.
Certainly. Glad to be here. My name is John Winn. I'm on the Strategic Plan Committee, presently serving as Chair. 95th opportunity to present a status, a quarterly status, the first of, I'm sure, will be several status updates to the Board of Selectmen. I've prepared some material. I've also asked one of my committee members to join, join us. Marlene Batista is here, so if there's questions later that I can't answer, then Marlene possibly can help round out the discussion. As I mentioned, I prepared some materials. I think it's a four or five-page deck. I can walk us through that. And I recognize that since these meetings are typically televised, this is a great initial step in public engagement, involvement, and update on what the committee is, what we're trying to do, where we are, where we want to try and go, so.
Please.
With that, any questions before I begin? So on page one, or page three of the document, actually, I'm sorry, page two, just outlines the topics I'll go through, which is a brief introduction, some background on the committee that I thought would be a good baseline for us to have, the work that we've completed to date, our planned next steps, and then allow some time for questions and answers afterwards. So page three, the Board of Selectmen, in conjunction with other town boards, determine the need to establish a strategic plan committee to better define the longer-term planning needs of the town. The Board of Selectmen invited residents with an interest and capability to submit their applications for consideration and evaluated and selected candidates. Candidates were appointed on May 17th, and we were sworn in during early June and initiated our meetings on June 13th. Moving on to page four, what I've summarized here at the top of the page is basically a summary of the strategic plan charge, which was outlined and presented to us. Basically, the major steps in the initial charge was to engage a planning consultant with coordination of town purchasing and procurement, develop a process for establishing the plan, provide periodic updates, quarterly, identify and leverage best or leading practices from other towns and communities around the state or elsewhere for RFPs and also for strategic plans. Utilize approaches to gather stakeholder input from the town residents to make sure that this is a community-built and driven plan. Community input, buy-in, and support for the plan that we go about developing will be a critical success factor for the ultimate strategic plan. And then, as appropriate, update and modify the structure of the committee to add members, depending on what different subcommittees might be needed to more detail the examine aspects of what needs to be in the strategic plan. Bottom part of the page, I identify who our strategic plan members are, who are Marlene Batista, Jay Gross, Karen Kaiser, Tom Montelli, as you mentioned, is resigned. We'll get Justin Thomas engaged and involved as soon as possible, Jacqueline Picorilla, Stephanie Schechter, and myself. So moving on to the next page, basically, what we've done to date in the several meetings that we've had is elect officers to help manage our activities, perform the research to identify RFPs and strategic plans, and read through them so we can call out best approaches and practices for describing what the plan needs might be. We actually have drafted and have in pretty final form an RFP that we're reviewing with town procurement to make sure we're in compliance with town requirements and guidance. I've also had several members of town boards take a look at it to make sure that it sufficiently describes what we think we want to communicate as far as what the plan might be and what our needs are, the status of the town, and some other background information. Those seem to me to be leading practices as far as having good background for a planning consultant to understand the assignment we're asking them to participate in. Few other steps, we've outlined a high-level project plan. We've also developed introductory materials for a webpage on the town's website, realizing that that is another critical aspect of community engagement. So we've drafted the content that will go on there, describing the background for a strategic plan, what we're trying to accomplish, resources and material that we've identified. So we'll have up there the strategic plans that we've identified from other towns and communities to serve as a point of reference if people want to go out and review them, describe what the process might be. There were some strategic planning toolkits for municipalities that we identified that really lay out the process from beginning to end. So we'll provide that on the website as well, so that people can access and review that to, if people have an interest and want to get deeper into the process, we'll have that available as well. We've also received some updates from the town's economic development team, realizing that economic development is going to be a key component of what the strategic plan needs might be, and received an update from the MetroCogs Regional Planning Team, so that we understand what type of skills, capabilities, and information they may have that we might be able to leverage in the development of the strategic plan, and also to make sure that when we engage a planning consultant, we don't have the planning consultants go about developing data and information that might already be available with the MetroCogs team, which they're very willing and interested in providing. So flipping over to page six, our planned next steps. Basically, continue our regular meeting schedule, which our president is, present is once a month, second Tuesday of the month. We have met in this room, will, I think, in the future be using the conference room on the second floor in this building. Our agendas are posted on the website, the town website, our minutes are posted on the town website, so people that have an interest in it or are coming to meetings will understand what the topics are that'll be on the agenda and come and participate in the meeting. I'm going to try and meet with members of other town boards who are interested. I know that Tom Flynn, as part of the Board of Finance, is one of the people that I'll be meeting with, and as I meet with other ones, I'll provide updates on what that is. Review and finalize the RFP with the procurement team, get that issued and ready to go into the marketplace. I won't issue it until I have a discussion, Mr. Tetra, with you to make sure that we're not getting out in front of ourselves with everything else that's going on. But I'll let you know when we're prepared and ready to go to market with it, but we'll be prudent about when we do that. Finalize the webpage and have it go live. Begin to outline initial potential issues that are of strategic importance for the town. Some of the comments that we've received so far is that that's a good initial step so that we have some ideas of what those might be as we go through the process of engaging a planning consultant. Launch the project with the external provider once we finish the procurement and RFP evaluation steps, and then begin to implement steps to begin public communication interaction. I actually feel that we've already started that, A, with today's meeting and discussion. Once we get the website up, that would be another good initial step. Realizing, though, that part of the strategic plans, the lessons learned that we've identified from the steps, from the plans that we've reviewed, is public engagement and update is a critical success factor for plans. So we need to have a multi-forum type of engagement process for the community, whether it be meetings, focus groups, surveys, articles in the newspaper, information on websites, whatever. But we'll figure out some answers to those approaches to get the best community involvement. And certainly, we're always open for suggestions on how to improve or do that differently. Finalizing the last couple of points in this page is just to continue the communication with this board, to make sure that we're providing you the kind of information you need for quarterly updates. If you would like more frequent updates, we're always ready and available to come in and meet with you and do whatever we're requested to do. And then, meet with any other town boards, commissions, or whatever that have an interest in kind of where we're going. So I know that's a lot of information to kind of go through in five or seven minutes. Last page is just a couple of questions. Is there any questions that you might have on the activities that we've done to date? Do you have any suggestions or observations now or in the future, however you'd like to get to me, for different or additional activities? And are there questions on the process that we have planned going forward, so?
Any comments from the board? Mr. Timmyack?
One comment slash question. I know the strategic plan committees I've been working or worked on in the past, one with Bridgeport, a lot of the outside vendors we've had have come from out of the state, so I want you to think about that when you go about putting the RFP in the marketplace to make sure that we're not just like doing it local or statewide, that we're hitting the New York area and even the Washington DC area. And a lot of times, they have keywords, these companies, so they'll know when something pops up and it hits the website, so I just wanted to keep that in mind, then.
Great suggestions. I've preliminarily identified providers that have done strategic plans for other municipalities. Those providers were based in Chicago, Seattle, and Cincinnati.
Yes.
In addition to some that have done plans for communities in the state of Connecticut, those providers were resident in the state of Connecticut but were reasonably large, well-known firms.
I worked with a firm out of New Jersey. They're actually out of Rutgers, which was pretty cool.
If you can get me that information, I'd certainly appreciate it.
Yeah, they're pretty good, too. Just want to make sure everybody knows you have a really good respondents to choose from.
Yep. I think that that's one of the standard practices of our purchasing department in terms of making sure we get the widest pool of applicants in order to get the best qualified and best financing on a program like this. and best financing on a program like this, so I know we do that in other areas, and I'd fully expect we'd follow that standard practice here as we've talked, and I know you've had extensive conversations with our purchasing department to make sure that we get the support on that.
I have, and they are familiar with that, and that's one of the things that we'll try and do, so yes.
Mr. Colly?
Yeah, Mr. Winn, thank you for being here. You guys have got a lot done in two months, so congratulations on those first couple of months of hard work. You've answered most of my questions, a couple of quick ones. As far as coverage and additional coverage for your meetings, will Fair TV be covering the meetings of this committee?
One, that's a question for Fair TV. I suspect there's a lot of detailed work, there might be, one of the reasons for asking the planning committee to come before us for updates is we get the benefit of Fair TV in that.
Right.
If the Board of Finance or RTM or any other board would like an update, certainly Planning, Enzoian, Board of Ed are filmed on Fair TV also, so I suspect we can accomplish that.
Okay.
With, and that's quarterly updates, for lack of a better term.
Yeah, I thought this venue would be a reasonable one to provide that. If we have, as part of our, after we engage a consultant, a major community-type of event where we're going to be presenting information, getting feedback, and might have a number of different people speak on the topic, inviting Fair TV to film that so it's available both either live or for later replaying, I would certainly support that, that would be a good thing to do.
Good, that makes perfect sense.
Yep, and just to be clear, that is a decision that Fair TV makes, not something they'd come back to anybody else for, so, A, please let them know, B, I think along those lines, if there are milestones like that, where you would like a larger crowd and want to make sure, like, when you release the website and that's up and running, let's work together with my office, make sure we can get a press release out, so we'll get that out to all the news media, so we get the widest possible range of publicity on those key milestones or that step, so we can make sure we're keeping up, and certainly, if it's a meeting where you want substantial interest, we can set up a press release for that specific meeting to encourage.
I will certainly do that, and once we have it up and you all have an opportunity to read it, if there's content you think would enrich the community's understanding that's not on there, let me know, and we'll get something drafted so we fill in whatever blocks you might think the community would be interested in reading or knowing about.
Yep, and then, as you and I talked, we have tentatively started to schedule dates for a quarterly update to this board.
Mm-hmm.
So, we'll be kept abreast of this, and I think that will also help keep the entire town, the public, abreast as we go through that, in addition to the public meetings and hearings that you'll be having. All right, any further comments from the board?
Just one more quick question, something we talked about on the phone. I know you're doing a lot of benchmarking of some other towns while you're putting the RFP together, which makes perfect sense. Can you give us a sampling of some of the towns that you've looked at for, you know, benchmarking the RFP that we're putting together to go out to the world?
So, I have a list of, and Mr. Tetra, I think I've provided this to you already, six, seven, seven towns.
Okay.
Three are in Connecticut, two are in Canada, two are out west, round numbers sort of thing, as far as the RFP is concerned. Towns that have developed strategic plans or are partway through developing their strategic plan, we have one, two, three. At least 12 different communities.
Okay.
Most of which are Connecticut, one or two are in Canada. Some of them have done, like, we have a Bridgeport plan, which is the downtown reinvention and the waterfront master plan, not exactly akin to a strategic plan, but we have the community of Nogatuck, Connecticut, which is a bit up the coast, a bit inland, relatively close in size to us, maybe within 15,000. We have their RFP, we have their completed plan, we know who their provider was, so we have a good kind of stream of information to really evaluate how we're doing versus where they got to, so.
Good, well, good, that sounds good. Back to Mr. Timniak's point about, you know, creating a wider group of opportunities for us to look at, not just for, you know, who does the work, but getting the RFP put together to reach the right people with the right messaging, so it sounds like you're on track.
Yeah, and the plans that we have for all of those communities, when we get the site up, we'll have a section that is other documents, and we'll have those there so that anyone that's interested can go review those plans and just see what they say.
Thank you.
Good, I think that's an excellent move, and I think that will help educate our community about what can be expected in a strategic plan, what it is and what it isn't.
Right.
Any further comments from the board?
No, thank you, John, you're doing.
Thanks, John. Yep, thank you, and thank your committee.
If you need more, just let me know, you know how to reach me, and I'll come down and we'll do whatever we need to.
Yep, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next up, Project Management Oversight Selection Committee. To hear, consider, and approve a candidate selected by the Project Management Oversight Selection Committee to provide project management oversight services for the H. Smith Richardson Clubhouse project. May I have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion.
A second?
Second.
All right, that item's now before us, Mr. Bradley. Would you care to come up and fill us in?
I provided a background memorandum to the Board of Selectmen, which really explains what we did. We followed our charge provided to us by this board, met from October through July, went through a process of developing a RFP, request for proposals, went out to the marketplace, ended up with nine candidates, shortlisted three, interviewed them extensively, and based on numerical voting, a matrix that was developed by the committee and by Mr. Foley, we were, we determined a candidate who scored very well, and that's one that the town is familiar with, Colliers International, as the project management oversight for this proposed project, H. Smith Richardson Clubhouse. So, the process went very well, there are a lot of firms interested in working for the town in this capacity, and I applaud the board's move to bring on project management oversight early. Our citizen building committees are not overwhelmed, but almost outstripped by what's going on in the marketplace as far as the complexities of design and construction and the related risks and so forth, so having somebody with them who's experienced in the industry is a real positive, and I think it will help a lot.
Okay, very good. Any questions from the board?
All right. I reviewed the RFP when it went online, it looked very complete. How many people you had applied for?
Were nine respondents, and three that were really, it was pretty easy, although we did go through a numerical scoring matrix, and everybody did that independently, and Mr. Foley kept, was our scorekeeper, and so we came to the three finalists pretty easily, and they were all good, they were all qualified.
And what other projects has Colliers done in the town, you said we're familiar with them?
Well, the most familiar with them was Penfield, but I think they have done, I'm not sure what it was.
Riverfield?
Riverfield, I know.
Holland Hill, possibly?
Holland Hill, I think, yeah.
I don't mean that being comprehensive, those are just two that come to mind.
Right, and we found with Penfield that bringing them, bringing a project management oversight firm in late was not good, that the earlier the better, especially when it comes to defining the project budget and scope of the project and leading the committee. We had a particularly good, very experienced Penfield Building Committee, but we were just fortunate the way that happened, so, but Colliers was good, so we did have some really good background. We had three committees, three members of the selection committee had already had experience with Colliers at Penfield, and they did a very, very good job there.
Okay, very good. Any further questions?
Thanks for the update.
I'll just quickly thank you for the update, and, you know, getting the project management in place early is a key, and I think that's a great concept, and thank you for pushing that concept forward, that will help us with this project and every project. When you got down to three, was there, I mean, Colliers done work for us before that we know about, was there any other big distinguishing factor between them and the other two finalists? Was there any other place where they really stood out?
No, it's very hard to determine the fee structure that we had to wrestle with a little bit, because everybody looks at it, you're asking a consulting firm to come in when they really don't know the full extent of the project.
Right.
Even though we gave them a project background as part embedded in the RFP, and they really don't know the strengths and weaknesses of their client yet, although Colliers did, the other two didn't. So, Colliers did have an advantage, that they knew they could judge their fee structure and the people they would assign to the project because they knew how Fairfield operated, but the scoring was close for the three of them, so we could have gone with or without Colliers.
Thank you.
Okay to go to the public? Any comments from the public? All right, seeing none, we're back to the board. Any further comments before we vote? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley, thank you, and your committee, because I know how many hours you all put in, because I saw you up there in the evening working on this stuff.
Okay.
Do we need to insert the candidate's name in what we voted on?
Would you like to make that an amendment to the motion?
Sure. I'd like to amend the last motion, too. I'd like to strike the word candidate and insert, or approve, after approve, strike the and candidate, insert Colliers International, selected by the Project Management Oversight Committee.
All right, I have a second for that amendment?
I'll second that. Chris, should we make it Strategic Building Solutions, comma, DBA Colliers as it's in the plan?
Sure, yeah.
Would that make complete sense? So, it's Strategic Building Solutions, comma, DBA Colliers International.
Second. Do you have that? All right, the amendment, the amendment only is before us, any further comments on the amendment? Any comments in the public? Back to the board, all in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All right, the item as amended is before us, any further discussion? Any comments in the public on the item as amended? Back here, are we ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, Mr. Timniak, thank you. All right, next up, item nine, is the Fire Chief, and this will require Board of Finance and RTM approval. To hear, consider, and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Fire Chief. Whereas, it is in the best interest of the town of Fairfield to expend up to $110,788 to purchase firefighter health and fitness equipment and training, 90% of said cost to be reimbursed by the, by a reimbursable federal emergency management agency FEMA assistance to firefighters grant.
Make a motion to waive the reading.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will summarize this in saying the grants for $100,000, there'll be a $10,000 contribution or matching component from the town, and it is reimbursable to that extent, so we have to spend the $110,000 first. With that as a setup, Chief, would you take us through?
Yes, good evening, Dennis McCarthy, Fire Chief, and also with me is Chief George Camola, who is the author of the grant to FEMA. Every year, we have an opportunity to apply for a federal assistance to firefighters' grant fund program, and over the past several years, we've paid particular attention to how firefighters get hurt and killed from around the country, and focused on Fairfield firefighters in particular, and we've had a number of injuries over the course of time, and certainly, that has a great personal impact to the firefighter and the Department of Financial Impact as well. And nationwide, we see a number of firefighters, although in good health, are suffering from heart attacks because of the nature of the work, the physiological effects of adrenaline, and the stress of the job. Most recently, we had a heart attack volunteer from another community training down at the fire school, a 48-year-old firefighter, volunteer firefighter in relatively good shape, lean and active, and suffered a heart attack and went into cardiac arrest, and fortunately, we were able to intervene, and he underwent surgery the next day and is surviving, but it's indicative of the potential. And when we looked at how we can intervene in this process, Chief Camola made the recommendation of applying for a grant to be more proactive in our approach to firefighter wellness and fitness. Firefighters need to aspire to a level of fitness above the general population, it's referred to as a tactical athlete, the description is in the packet. It is, they need to be able to do a lot of things, not just run fast and long, because their job is not just running, it includes a lot of lifting, pushing, carrying, as well as having that stamina. So, we don't need someone who's just capable of running, or someone who's just capable of lifting weights, we need a complete package, and it falls in the definition of tactical athlete. Chief Camola has developed a number of programs for which is included in the packet that will include training of our personnel, we have peer fitness trainers on each shift that has been developed under Chief Camola's guidance that support each other, so in each station, there would be an expert, quasi-expert, that would help others promote fitness and participate in daily PT at the firehouse. This is part of a larger movement in the state of Connecticut that we are part of to really bring firefighters from recruit to retiree in better health than maybe they have been in the past. And for the town of Fairfield, it represents, one, our ability to do their job better, first and foremost, but equally important with less injury and potential for any negative medical impacts that have a financial benefit to the town. There's been a number of studies nationwide of the investment of dollars, and for every dollar, depending on which study you use, you know, there is a multiple benefit back to the pound, and anywhere from $1 to $7 of payback for each dollar invested. We're not able to quantify that, and fire departments typically have had a very difficult time quantifying that kind of benefit, but industry has done those types of studies. So, we think that this has a great benefit from the fire department. We would expand this to other departments, particularly in the police department, and make available all of the equipment and training, and when we run and train the trainer programs, include the police department and any other department that could see a benefit for their personnel, and to the extent that we might open up to other departments, we would offset some of our costs, which would be $10,000, our 10% of the grant, and charge fees if appropriate for participation, help offset some of the town of Fairfield costs. And Chief Camola is here to answer any questions, specifically about the equipment and the approach, but that's the thumbnail sketch.
All right, any comments from the board?
Congratulations on receiving the grant, I know they're pretty competitive right now. Is this a yearly grant or is this a one-time shot?
One-time, yep, and we have an 18-month performance period to complete the work that is included in the grant application. But the benefits, once it starts, we will then maintain the equipment, we will have the equipment forever, but we have an 18-month performance period, which is typical of federal grants.
Well, congratulations on getting a grant. Thank you. Anything here?
Quickly, yes, thank you, Chief. I just wanted to talk a little bit about the tactical athlete, because that gets overlooked a lot, and for anyone that has had the opportunity to take the fire training class, that's where you really learn what these men and women do. I was in the very first class that you put together, and I think, I think the class has been lightened up a little bit physically since then, that's what I've been told by a few folks, but that day in that class totally exhausted me, and I was in decent shape going into it, and it wasn't just what you're doing or how much you were doing, it was how you had to exert your energy in spurts, whether you were grabbing the hose or whether you were taking the hose up the ladder onto the roof, and it's easy to see, having gone through that, you know, the importance of the firefighters being in as best possible shape as they can and being trained specifically to combat these, you know, situations that are in, so I can easily see the ROI even without the numbers, so, thank you.
And if I might, could I ask Chief Camola just to say a couple of words about how his approach is that he did, George has done a tremendous amount of work. Every program needs a champion, and the enthusiasm is perishable, and it wanes over time, and I think that that consistent approach and support, so George, if you would like to come up and just say a couple of words about the grant and how you've approached it.
Assistant Chief George Camola, Fire Department, in this capacity, I'm speaking as the Health and Wellness Director. My hat's off to the board, thank you for hearing us and for supporting hopefully this initiative. Mike, as someone who's a football coach, former football coach, what we did in high school won't carry us through in our 50s, and almost all of our firefighters.
Thank you for that age.
He was looking at you.
We need, we need to change the paradigm as we get older, you know, there's a saying in services and. There's a saying in services, in the military, in police and fire, that what we did for selection will not sustain us into longevity. So the purpose of this grant is to take and provide the resources we need to learn properly, to teach our people what they need to do to maintain health, to maintain function, and to perform at a high level throughout their career. Instead of just throwing money at the problem by buying equipment, this grant is about educating our people using best practice. And more importantly, it's about providing equipment that's going to give them in-depth information about their current health. We're getting something called an in-body scanner, which is a segmental body analyzer, which is research-grade. And we had it on loan for about a month. And the results that we got in terms of learning about the things that are killing our firefighters, the visceral fat levels and body fat percentages, and things that, if you look at and you see, you can by yourself determine the need for change. Because I can't get you healthy, you have to want it. And even if we provide equipment, if it's not going to be used because the individuals aren't intrinsically motivated, then we're wasting our time. So our goal here is on a couple of levels, to provide our guys with the knowledge they need to train well and to train smart without getting hurt, to provide them with the information they need about themselves as individuals, what they need to do in terms of reducing their fat levels, increasing their muscle mass, the things they need to do to improve their survivability on the job and also their level of function. And finally, by providing a peer trainer model, we're able to ensure that this program will sustain, because it'll be brothers helping brothers. And that's the way things get done in the fire service. You know, I do that not for myself, but for my brother. So by creating that model, we can ensure not only sustainability, but success. And that's our goal.
Okay, thank you. Hey, a couple of questions. One, we talked about this being an 18-month program.
Correct.
Talk to us a little about what happens during that 18 months, and then what happens after? What changes? What continues, what changes? How does that work?
Okay, we start off with educating our people. We take our team leaders and our higher, and our, basically our team leaders, and we provide them with higher-level global knowledge. There's something called a T-SAC facilitator program. It's a program that was designed by the National Strength Coach Association specifically for tactical, for coaches or trainers who are involved in working with the tactical population, specifically police, fire, and military. By providing a global view for our team leaders, they understand where this program is going to go. On the next level, we're going to take peer trainers, which is a program that was developed in cooperation by the International Association of Firefighters and the International Association of Fire Chiefs, that provides firefighters with the training they need to be the one-on-one in the field, helping their other firefighters in the gym. And after they get that basic knowledge, we're going to take and provide specialty training for individuals to take and provide subject matter experts in different areas of assessment. We're going to start off with something called a functional movement screen. A functional movement screen is a certification, but more importantly, an assessment that identifies joint mobility and joint stability. It's currently in use by most progressive universities in the country with their sports programs. It's in use by the U.S. Navy Special Warfare Group for identifying movement challenges that could lead to injury in all of their operators, starting with BUDS-Prep on forward. By taking and identifying those things that can cause injury, and more importantly, by providing corrective solutions to address any of those movement challenges, we're going to reduce injuries right off the bat. Once we ensure that our athletes are ready for, to accept training challenges, then we're going to have what's called a basic physical assessment, which is general physical strength assessment where we test muscle strength and cardiovascular endurance. And the goal of having the assessments is, prior to taking and creating a stress level, the problem with a lot of fire service fitness assessments is there's a high mortality rate. If you kill people while you're trying to assist them, it's lose-lose, there's no benefit there. So we're going to identify all the risk factors prior to having our people do the assessment. Once we do a physical assessment, then we're going to do, it's kind of similar to a strength training model for a sports team. First, you do general physical strength, then you assess sport-specific strength. The sport-specific strength for firefighters is going to be the ability to function with a high level of proficiency with SCBA, with our breathing apparatus. And then we're going to take and progress, because we're a shoreline community, we're going to do a marina assessment and do a water comp assessment. And the final component of the program, in addition to the data management element, which is self-explanatory, is the last year of record, 91 firefighters died of suicide in this country. So we added a behavioral health component so that we could take and train our firefighters to be peer counselors. We've got the peer trainers to address the physical challenges, and we've got the peer counselors to affect the behavioral health challenges. So we're looking at this as a comprehensive program that addresses from an intellectual level what we need to do as a fire service to stay healthy, and more importantly, to meet the needs, the changing needs of this profession.
Okay, thank you. Juan, I like your analogies, and I'd argue that, less than football, it's more like scuba diving, in my experience, where basically you learn some basic diving skills, but they've broken out the night diving, the rec diving, the cave diving skills, and you focus on those areas when you're doing that. You kind of add those as you need them, a little bit more like the tactical approach, I think you're suggesting here, as opposed to just general diving and say, hey, you're a scuba diver, go get them.
It's highly technical.
The $110,000, how much of that is equipment? How much of that is consulting, training?
I've got the numbers.
Okay. How much hardware are we getting and how much software?
All right, the, in a nutshell, the, the real equipment stuff, the scanner, the research-grade scanner is going to be about $15,000. The, another type of scanning equipment, which involves a heart rate monitor and a special electrodes that measure central nervous system status. It's called an omegawave training system. It's something that's currently in use by Navy SEALs and also by elite performance teams and elite marathon runners. That's going to be about $17,000. We've got, the equipment costs are approximately 30 percent. The remainder of the grant is spent on education, and the peer counseling section is going to be-
When you say it's spent on education, who is it spent on?
All right, for example-
We're bringing outside consultants to teach our people how to do this? We're basically paying the trainers?
Yes and no.
That's one of my favorite answers.
All right. We took, I took a hard look at how to best use the monies from this grant, and where to provide the best training. For our T-SAC facilitators, that's a course that's offered in three different locations in the country, Virginia Beach, Colorado, and in California. The best trainers in the country, in my opinion, having met all of them, are in Virginia Beach. They work very closely with the SEAL teams that are located in Little Creek. So that's where I want to send my people. So the team leaders are going to go there to get trained. It wouldn't make sense to send our people out for the peer fitness trainer program, because we'd have to cover travel and expenses. So instead of sending our people out for that, we're going to sponsor a peer fitness trainer program here. The cost for that is $30,000. It's contractual cost, there's nothing to do with it. The win-win is that we can charge or offer for free, if we want to be generous, unfilled spots to other departments so they could participate. As far as the certifications, when we can use online certifications to save money, for example, with the functional movement screen, we're going to do Level 1 with an online certification, and Level 2 where you apply corrective strategies, you really need hands-on for that. So we looked at the cost of having, of hosting an online cert for FMS, it was prohibitive. It was too much. It's cheaper for us to send people to be certified than to host. So in that respect, we're going to send our firefighters to become Level 2 FMS corrective specialists. As far as the equipment goes, the conditioning equipment that we're looking to get at $17,000 is something called Katsu. It's a evidence-based training modality that is extremely safe. It'd take me about 45 minutes to explain to you how it works. If you want to do that at another time, I'd be happy to. But it's something that's in use by NASA, by some major universities, and by Naval Special Warfare Group. And it's an amazing training modality that provides a lot of bang for a buck in a very, very safe environment. So I didn't really do a complete breakout. I can give that to you if you want. But it's, we're spending more money on developing our people than we are on buying equipment. The equipment that we are buying is analytical and for evaluation purposes.
For the equipment that we are buying, where will it be located?
The, the segmental scanner will be most likely located at Station 2, because it's centrally located. Our intention is to provide access, like when we had the segmental scanner on loan, we brought it down to Station 1, and we opened the opportunity for PD to use it. So my vision would be, it'll be stationed at Station 2, because it's centrally located, and we would put it at Station 1 and at the Fire Training Center, when we wanted to share it with our internal partners. And at the Fire Training Center, hopefully, we could open it up for outside departments to use it. The omegawave equipment, it's going to be designed to be, to be provided in-house. So each firehouse will have scanning equipment. The big thing about omegawave, and the thing that attracted me to it, and I've used it for almost a year now, it allows us to assess heart rate variability, which is a precursor to cardiovascular accident. So we can assess a combination of your cardiovascular function as well as your central nervous system function, which allows us to determine levels of chronic stress. So it gives our firefighters a go-no-go window of trainability so that they can determine, when they're on shift, if they should be performing high-intensity activity, which if they're not, if they don't have the fuel load, if they don't have the central nervous system rest or capacity, they could hurt themselves. The risk of injury is higher than it's go-no-go. We're going to recommend active recovery versus intense physical activity. And therein lies the great challenge, you know? There was a time where no pain, no gain, and that was the motto of all we did for training. The reality today is, especially with tactical athletes, the greatest challenge, I spoke with the director of the Human Performance Division for the Naval Special Warfare Group, and his greatest challenge is taking and convincing his operators that they need to rest, and then coming up with specific active recovery activities, such as float tanks, or hot yoga, or leash, things that would bring them back to a good place to train. Because everybody wants to just train hard. But the downside with our firefighters and with all tactical athletes, if you train hard when your body is resource depleted, your chances for injury or cardiovascular accident are through the roof. So this type of equipment will be stored in the station, and be used by firefighters on a daily basis to provide a snapshot of what's called a window of trainability. The other equipment, it's all portable and easily moved, so we'll be able to move it around and best place it. My goal is to empower our peer trainers and our team leaders to make the decisions that will work best for each station and for our guys.
After the initial 18 months, what are the costs involved in our program?
It depends. Baseline would be, as with any type of certification, there's recertification fees. For the peer fitness trainer, they're required to maintain 30 credits every three years. Now, if we provide our people with the opportunity to do-
And how many peer fitness trainers do we have?
We're looking at 12. We want to increase our number to 12. And the majority of those can be done through online certifications and can be done on duty. So the costs-
Are there any costs?
Not for that part. It'd be, it'd be minimal, and it could be absorbed through our training budget.
What are the ongoing costs of the program?
The, here's my hope, and it's included in the last part of the explanation, the 14-point summary. As we move forward, as our peer fitness trainers receive their knowledge and their certifications start to work with our firefighters, additional costs are going to be, next year, I'm going to be coming back to you and say, look, we're going to need an additional $10,000 in equipment for our stations. We'll try the grant process, but the reality is, we have some antiquated equipment or equipment that was donated, it's on its last leg, so we're going to need some equipment. So that's going to be an anticipated recurring cost. Just like anything else, equipment wears out. But the hope is that as we realize the benefit of this program with reduction of sick and injury leave, that what we receive in terms of reduction, not just with our fire department direct costs, but because the town is self-insured, it's going to have a trickle effect in all of our health costs, that will more than offset the cost of additional equipment expenditures through the savings we receive on a global level.
Do we have an estimate of the annual costs over the first five years that we have this? From after the 18 months, where there's no cost, because we're covered by the grant, the next five years? What are the, do we have an estimate of what those costs are?
So as Chief Camola pointed out, there is, whether we have the grant or not, there's equipment that we maintain in the state of fitness equipment, that we evaluate on a regular basis, and station officers or peer fitness trainers in the station come through the budget process and has to be replaced. That number has been minimal. I can't remember the last, we bought a treadmill for Station 2. And I think that in the 18 months that I've been here, that's the only expenditure. Those types of costs would continue as they have in the past. It's replacing equipment that currently exists in the station when it wears out. So I don't think that the number is very high. Certainly, in this economic environment, we're very cautious in all of that. All of those requests get scrutinized very carefully.
Yeah, I think there are two things. One is that, one is you're always conscious. My real question is, because we're buying something, what are we obligating ourselves to as an annual payment after that? Second, if we spend all this money, which sounds very well spent, I'm not being critical of that at all, I want to know what we're buying into. So in the past, if we had a budget crunch and we skipped the treadmill for a year, no big deal. But as Chief Camola said, 10 grand a year on new equipment to keep it rolling, to make sure we don't lose the benefit of the $100,000 in the training effort we put in, I'm trying to get a feel for what we're signing up for here. Make sure there's full disclosure and transparency in terms of what the town is being asked to fund.
I understand your question better now. You don't have to reinvest anything. The knowledge, if we choose not to, each year, you will have the opportunity to say yea or nay to additional equipment. In the last four years, we fitted our stations with enough functional equipment to establish adequacy. Functional training equipment like kettlebells and TRX straps and barbells last forever. The treadmills and the other type of equipment that some of the guys like, they have lifespans. But the knowledge and the education that we'll be giving our people to use the equipment we've already purchased wisely will be something that will become self-fulfilling. They will hopefully develop a hunger for additional knowledge. They'll realize personal benefit in terms of increased strength and stamina, in terms of increased strength and stamina, which becomes self-perpetuating, and also they'll hopefully inspire others to learn and share their knowledge. There's certification costs. If we choose to maintain our peer fitness trainer certification, that's minimal. It's a couple hundred dollars a year per guy. You take one sick day and it covers the cost of, of almost all of my trainers for, for one year, if you look at it, if you look at it that way. The Omegawave has a licensing fee that we could reassess. I think it's $1,200 that's included. It's actually, it's included in the grant request this year, and if it doesn't work for us next year, we won't renew it. But if we were to renew it, I think it's $1,200 for the year for the department, which is pennies per guy. You can't put, in my opinion, you can't put a price on the knowledge that, that we're going to be gaining. If we had one line of duty death, or if we had one significant injury, one significant injury will, will, would cost more than $100,000 in terms of, an ACL injury with a six-month window before you can return to duty is going to cost the town probably about $180,000. When you factor in your, your medical costs, you factor in your replacement, you factor in the amount of money you have to pay, and that doesn't even touch the, the wear and tear on the individual's family and the impact, so.
Chief, you're absolutely right in terms of the, that sort of cost analysis and breakout. The challenge is that if we could sit here and say, okay, let's start to show our declining insurance costs, our declining sick days based on this, you could graph that over the next five years, that would really help.
We did, I did, actually did, and I can give it to you. Based on the studies-
I need you to give it to the chief, so it's included in the budget.
Okay. Well, based on the studies that the IAFF did, they anticipate a 20% reduction in sick costs.
Okay.
And I, my initial-
Certainly, certainly.
Sick and injury.
Yep.
And, and based on what we did in the last year, that results in about $160,000 savings annually.
I would very much like to, to see that. And certain, first of all, it's, it's obviously, firefighters are near and dear to our heart for everybody in terms of everything they've done for our community. So anything we do to make them safer is absolutely essential. The question is always, when you reference payback, it's like, how do you measure that to see that? So since you have some measurable data, I would love to see that so we can take a look at that. And I'm assuming, is there, I mean, you've referenced saving lives through all this, and that's certainly one of the, the challenges when we look at firefighter deaths. Those are always painful to read about, learn about, whether on duty or off duty, when you're looking at that. Do we have any documented data that this program and experience elsewhere impacts that and does save lives?
Yeah, the, the data that I'm referring to is, is something that was developed through the, the Health Wellness Initiative, the IAFF, IAFC, and they basically, they, they came up with a 20% reduction based on what's called a, a formal health and wellness program. And formal health and wellness has certain parameters which our program is designed to meet. It varies with specific communities. What Houston Fire Department wants to do with their Health and Wellness Department is very different than what we want. Conceptually, it's the same. We, we hit the, the same benchmarks, but they may go at it a little bit different. There's an NFPA standard which guides the creation and, and kind of structures how we put together our wellness program. Our goal is to make this program consistent with the intentions of, of that standard so that we, we can maximize the effectiveness of this.
Okay. I just, because, I'm a big fan of measurable results, so the idea of measuring that decline in, in insurance and in sick days, because I think that indicate, is an indicator not only of physical health but mental health and all of that, so I think that would be-
Well, if you look at, if you look at the tools-
Yep.
The, for example, we used the in-body scanner when we first got it to coincide with the body composition challenge. We ran for our firefighters for one month. And just by using that data, because it's a research-grade piece of equipment, it keeps track of the data, and it was, it allowed us to take and track individual gains. And both, from both ends of the spectrum, I had a firefighter who was able to increase lean muscle mass by six pounds in one month, which is crazy, and reduces body fat by, by about 6%. Another firefighter was able to reduce his body fat significantly in, in one month, and there was a lot of motivation behind it. But more importantly, it allows us to take and track blind all of our firefighters who we scan. Now, you combine that with our assessments, we've got a portion of this grant which specifically is designed to create a database and to create report queries that can quantify our improvements so that we're looking at, at real deal changes that we can measure. And then you take and you analyze that with our sick leave, which we can start tracking at the beginning of next year. And I can, I can pretty much guarantee you that we'll be able to statistically demonstrate the success or failure of our program.
No, excited about looking forward to that. And what you're describing, obviously we had a mutual friend named Pete Sorrelli, and it would have been great if this was program was around when Pete was serving as a firefighter.
It might have saved Pete's life, because Pete died of a heart attack. He's one of our casualties, our line of duty death casualties.
And you won't be surprised to learn that the union, who has been part of this process and several, several executive boards serve as peer fitness trainers, are fully supportive and they see the need and value and are fully participating in the process.
Yep. One other question, over to any additional overtime, because we're, is this training going to be done during shift? Is there any overtime required by the-
We took, one of the, if, and I know, you guys are all busy, but some of the contractual costs, any overtime that's going to be incurred as a part of this training has been covered by the grant. And that is why the education portion of this grant is so high, because we factored in the contractual costs for hiring people off and for paying for the replacements. So the, the town will not have to pay overtime for our people to attend the classes.
Can we make sure that's broken out, finance has that, so they know that money is supposed to be used to cover that overtime so we can track where that is-
Absolutely.
And how much that is. Second, after the grant is done, in 18 months, when we're going forward from that point, how much overtime is involved in the program?
Again, that's something that would be, with, that's something that can be determined at that time.
Can we determine zero? What's, I mean, when you say we can determine how, I mean, we're trying to manage overtime, what can I, what I'm trying to do is see what we're on the hook for. Are we buying into more overtime?
If we decide to continue this program, then what we would do is-
Well, we don't want to do it for 18 months and then stop. So let's say, let's assume that's a yes. My question is, if we continue this program, how much overtime?
What we would need to, I'd need to, to get those numbers together. What we would be looking at is the annual recertification for existing trainers, and also providing an opportunity to develop more peer trainers and to send more people to the TSAC. So the TSAC costs are, are pretty well documented, and the peer fitness trainers are, are documented as well.
I guess that's the, that's my one, one of my questions, which is, I'd like to see the full costs that we're signing up for. I understand the first 18 months is covered and we're not on the hook for that. I do want to know what it's doing to our ongoing targets. It, it looks, sounds like it's raising our base of overtime and some other costs. And my question is, how much is that? So aware of that. I don't want to sit here and agree to this now, and 18 months from now, say, wow, I didn't realize that was in there.
But what I think that I heard was that costs can be zero.
Absolutely.
That we can-
I didn't hear that. So if we could say that for the record, that would be good?
Right now, all of the costs that are associated with this grant will be covered by the grant for the grant period.
Right.
At which time, we'll have the opportunity to reassess and determine whether or not we want to invest more money into overtime to continue the grant beyond the scope. But we will have, we will have already paid for the education to carry us forward. We will have already paid for the training, we'll have the equipment that we need. So as of this time, I could say to you that unless we decide collectively that we want to support this program and grow it through overtime, which would be, which would be compensated by a significant savings in, in sick and injury leave, and based on, on past practice with other departments, the cost would be zero. But it's something we could reassess in 18 months and through the budget process to determine whether or not we want to provide training for additional peer fitness trainers.
I'm not hearing you two gentlemen say the same thing, guys, and, and chief, if I can. What I'd like to do is see a five-year plan for what we're going, because I keep hearing, there's overtime if you want to continue the program or you can stop the program. That's not what I'm asking.
We will have trained the peer fitness trainers in the department. They will have the skill and ability to continue in their role as peer fitness trainers. That does not require more overtime to continue the process. The training is occurring on duty, they're on duty. If we wanted to send them for more training, as we evaluate any kind of training that our members go to, any of the officers or firefighters, we make a decision whether we want to make that investment. We do not, to continue the benefit of the program that we've gained in 18 months, need to spend more money on overtime to continue it. Should we want to send people for additional training or certify more people, that comes with an expense. But clearly, we can complete 18 months and have a sustainable initiative that continues without cost to the town. There will be obviously decisions that need to be made, as they do with any training that we send people to. What do we do when that certification expires? Do we send them again? Some certifications expire, some of these will expire. We may or may not want to continue that. So I can, I can say, that number can be zero. And, and it would be zero if we, if we choose to limit our exposure to that.
If we're talking about certifications retired, there's got to be kind of a planned maintenance for recertification. When I was a CPR instructor, those certifications expired at some time, so you get recertified in CPR. If this is comparable, what's the, I mean, when do those, what's the, are those one-year, two-year, three-year, four-year?
The peer trainers have, I believe it's a two-year window to, to get 30 credits. And 30 credits can be performed online. The other option is that we can hold seminars at our training-
Online and during their normal work shift.
Exactly. So it wouldn't have to be done off duty. We could take and provide opportunities for training at the training center by hosting seminars. And when you host a seminar, you get comp, participation. You, you get to provide so many of your own people the opportunity.
And we don't pay people to attend training when they're off duty. So those peer fitness trainers would have the opportunity to do it online or come to a seminar at the training grounds, and off duty, or if they're on duty, you know, a quarter of them will be on duty at any one time. We could send them down to the training rooms.
Okay. Have we talked to risk management? Is there any additional liability for the town when we have all these additional trainers on things that are this important? Any liability for the town in terms of somebody getting hurt while training, that type of thing?
We're training now. So the liability that, that we have right now with guys working out is actually greater than having one of our firefighters trained under the guidance of a properly certified peer fitness trainer. So we're actually reducing our risk by providing increased level of, of safety and certification. The other variable is by, by doing the functional movement screen, we're going to identify movement challenges that could result in injury. And through our, our FMS certification, we're going to take and reduce those injuries before they happen. So what we're doing is we're reducing our risk liability through this.
Okay. Now, you mentioned one of the evaluation, one of the scan, I'm going to say scanner, I don't know if that's correct, but the word lets you indicate whether somebody from a training standpoint was ready to go through intensive training that day, or whether they had to stand down on that. If that scanner comes back and shows they're not ready for intense activity, do they take themselves offline? Are they able to fight fires? And if they get injured while fighting a fire, and we know that about them, do we have additional liability for that?
We're taking and, we're using this as, as a way to provide what's known as a window of trainability. A window of trainability, it, it basically identifies whether or not, based on your fuel reserves and your rest capacity, whether or not when you work out today, you should do endurance training, whether you should do power training, whether you should do strength and speed training, or whether you should do skill work, because your central nervous system is firing on all cylinders. It's a go, no-go system. And the way we plan on using it is to guide our firefighters for their workouts that day. It's a red, yellow, green. Red means use ca, is, is a no-go. Yellow is use caution, and green means go for it. If, if our firefighters scan all red, then what we would do is for their workout that day, we would recommend active recovery in a way to recharge their battery. Will it be used to determine duty status? No. Because you can come in, you could feel terrible. What we don't want is a guy to come in and who's feeling tired and drained and have him go do a crazy workout and, and compromise his ability to safely fight a fire because he's used his fuel reserves to work out, and they could be better used by increasing his service ability by performing active recovery. Now, there's specific strategies for active recovery, such as low-intensity circuit training, such as meditation, such as breathing drills, such as mobility work. Then the goal would be to have our peer trainers utilize these strategies. What we're doing is we're giving them more information so that they can train our firefighters with a higher level of safety. The intention is not to use it to restrict duty status.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions in the board?
That was my question. I think you answered it quite well. So, just so I'm clear, the, the go, no-go pertains first to the workout you're about to enter into.
Absolutely.
It's not go, no-go, you can't go fight that fire.
Correct.
So that all predates the active duty that they're potentially participating in for that day?
Right. It's, it's a voluntary tool-
Okay.
-that our guys can use when they want to work out. And, and I've used it myself, and I'll give you a perfect example. A friend of mine is a strength coach for the Seattle Saunders, and we were talking, the way he uses it with his athletes is he'll have them all scanned the day after a match. And based on their scan results, he'll tailor their training to meet their performance needs. In other words, guys who didn't play a lot, he'll do a high-intensity workout with. Guys who played a lot the day before, he'll do active recovery with. Guys who maybe are, they're wired a little bit, guys who are more, based on the Omegawave, if their Omegawave says that they should be speed work, they'll be doing speed work. If they should be doing skill work, they'll be doing skill work. And his, his impression was, this is one of the greatest tools because it allows us to optimize the training session to provide each individual what they exactly need. And if it's rest, it's rest. If it's speed work, it's speed work. If it's strength work, it's strength work. You reduce your injuries by training that way, and you improve the benefit of the training session. And that's our goal, to take and optimize the time spent on duty training, and also optimize the, the conditions that we create so that we can minimize the risk of injury and ensure that our guys are ready to go.
All right. Any further questions? Got it. Just one, last one, which is the, it's a $110,000 grant, $100,000 grant, 10 grand, grand from a $10,000 from a town matching standpoint. Where's that money coming from?
We have reserved that money in the 20, the, the grant was approved prior to the expiration of our budget in 27, fiscal year 2017. We have reserved the 10% match through the finance department, so it's coming out of 2017 fiscal year funds.
Good, thank you. With that, any questions in the public? Seeing none, back to the board. Are we ready to vote?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, moving on to item 10, Director of Public Works. To here, consider and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Director of Public Works, resolve that a solar power purchase agreement between the town of Fairfield and CRE, GRE, Fund Three CB One LLC, for the purpose of erecting a photovoltaic electric generation system on the roof of the Bigelow Center for Senior Activities at 100 Mona Terrace for the sole benefit of the Bigelow Center for Senior Activities. The term of this agreement being 20 years be and hereby is approved. May I have a motion to accept?
Any motions?
A second?
Second.
Can we combine 11 with this?
Mr. Bowman, can we?
Sure.
All right.
It's really the same presentation. They only have to make the presentation once.
Yeah.
It's the same presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Timniak. Let me read that and get that one before us. To here, consider and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Director of Public Works, resolve that a solar power purchase agreement between the town of Fairfield and GRE, Fund Three CB One LLC, for the purpose of erecting a photovoltaic electric generation system on the roof of Fairfield Woods Middle School at 11115 Fairfield Woods Road for the sole benefit of Fairfield Woods Middle School, and the term of the agreement being 20 years be and hereby is approved. May I have a motion to accept?
Make a motion.
A second?
Second.
All right. Gentlemen, that, those two items are now before us. Mr. Bowman, floor is yours.
First one, the Bigelow Center is actually, was before, it was three years ago, at a higher cost. It was going to be on the landfill, but we used the landfill exclusively for the treatment plant. They came back, now we redid the roof on Oldfield. So the price has gone from 11 cents to eight cents. And 11 cents was escalated, it's eight cents flat for 20 years or so. But by waiting and putting the roof on, we saved a lot of money on this project. So that's good there. The one on War is actually the third solar system going on the roof of War. There's two there already, and this is the third one going on now.
Thought this is Fairfield Woods.
I meant Fairfield Woods, sorry.
Okay.
Yeah. So it'll be three different solar systems, a lot of them from two different companies. So the roof is covered. And again, as the roof was replaced and fixed and upgraded, they just added more solar to it, so.
All right. And the reason this is before us now?
So they can do it. It's the approval, right, so they can actually go out and do the contract.
Gotcha.
So they will be doing that, you know, within a month, really. They're ready to start at Bigelow as soon as it's approved here, so.
Any questions in the board?
Is this part of the L-Rac?
Yes, Z-Rac, yeah.
Z-Rac. The roof at Bigelow, is, is it all done? Can you tell me, give me, give me a quick update on the roof? Did you do the entire roof?
No, we did.
Can you walk me through that?
Some of the roof had already been, I'm not sure exactly. Some of the roof had already been done in the past.
Mm-huh.
But, so this is the older roof that, it was like $150,000, I forgot the exact cost, $550. It's a major part of the roof, has been, it was been upgraded. But the, what amounts to it is the whole roof now is capable of holding solar, although we're not putting it on the whole roof. This is as much we could get.
So the roof is done, and now the roof is, the entire roof would be eligible for these if you had-
Yeah, except there's places you don't want to port it. There's, you know, HVAC equipment there, so you don't want to get too close to that, things like that. So they maximize it. They want to make money, so they maximize it to the greatest extent possible, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. I think, Mr. Carter was also asking, are we putting this on just the newer, newest roof? Or is this going to go on the-
You know, I'm not sure. I'm not sure. I think that's the case, but I am not positive.
Because that would be the full 20-year roof.
Yes. Yeah. So at least that, it's at least that, yeah.
Okay. Could you kind of find that out for any future discussions, please?
Sure can.
Any further discussions?
No, that was my question.
They're both at eight cents?
No. Oh, yes, they are. I'm sorry, they're both eight cents fixed for 20 years, yes.
And to follow up on the 20-year roof, if-
And, to follow up on the 20-year roof, if the solar company puts it on the roof, they wouldn't put it on a roof which they know might fail, because they're responsible for fixing it.
That's correct.
Because they'd be blamed for it, right?
Yeah. We have to give them, the manufacturer's warranty before they're actually going and do it.
Right. So sort of covered.
Yep.
Okay.
Anything else?
Nope.
Any comments in the public? Seeing none, back to the board. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Both items were for us, that was a vote on both items, is that correct, gentlemen?
Yes.
Sheila, you okay with that?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bowman, thank you. Next up, item 12, also from the Director of Public Works. This requires Board of Finance and RTM approval. To here, consider and act upon a resolution entitled, the resolution appropriating $3,200,000 for the costs associated with the replacement of the Valley Road Bridge over Horse Tavern Brook, authorizing a grant to reimburse $2,560,000 of such appropriation and authorizing the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation as recommended by the Director of Public Works. May I have a motion to accept?
Make a motion.
A second?
Second.
All right. The item is now before us. Ms. Pooley, could you introduce yourself and fill us in?
Sure. My name is Laura Pooley. I'm a senior civil engineer with the town of Fairfield, Engineering Department. Bill Hurley, who would normally do this presentation, is, is away, so you got me tonight. Valley Road Bridge, you've seen this before in the past for the design aspect of it. The town has already spent $350,000 on design fees, of which about 80%, well, 80% of that has been reimbursed. The bridge has been rated in poor condition and it is in desperate need of repair. So this money, which is from a federal local bridge program, the $3,200,000 maximum estimate to replace it, will cost the town approximately $640,000, or town share. So that's what we're here for tonight, to ask for approval for the acceptance of the $3.2 million grant and bond for it as well.
All right. Any questions from the board?
No, this is project, it has to get done.
Yeah. The deadline is, all the paperwork's due the end of September, so it's got to go through Board of Finance, RTM.
Between now and September 30?
Yes.
It's been overdue, so it's time...
It's all overdue, yeah.
It's time to get it done, right?
Yes.
All right. Yep. I think bridges are a necessity in this town, so no argument on that. The, it's a $3 million grant, the town share is 600,000?
640,000 is 3.2 million.
Okay, that's our 20%.
Mm-hmm.
And we'll, it's a reimbursable grant, so we'll bond the whole thing and be reimbursed as we...
Yep.
That's what the grant says. All right. Very good. Any further questions from the board? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, back to the board. Are we ready to vote?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Pooley.
Okay.
I think you may have the next one here, too.
Yeah. Bill would have had a harder time on that.
Yep. Like being at the end.
Item 13, the Director of Public Works also requires Board of Finance and RTM approval. To here, consider and act upon a resolution entitling, a resolution appropriating $1,448,950 for costs associated with pedestrian improvements, authorizing acceptance of, acceptance of grants and authorization, authorization of bonds as recommended by the Director of Public Works. May I have a motion to accept?
Make a motion.
A second?
Second.
All right. The item is now before us. Ms. Pooley?
Okay, I have some passouts, so you can see this one.
Thank you.
You've got, you've had this one of these in your packet, the pocket park, it's in color.
Excellent.
So this project started a number of years back. The town received a grant of a total of $2 million, which was previously bonded. 800,000 of that was a lots of grant, which was 100% funded. $1.2 million is 80% reimbursable. We've received that one and that allowed the town to do the design of this project, which is pedestrian improvements of Kings Highway from Chamber Street to Brentwood. Additional money became available, more grant money, which allowed us to extend the project up from Brentwood up to Villa Avenue. It added another 2,500 feet of Kings Highway. So, what, the, the map that I gave you highlighted, that's the entire length. This little pocket park that I gave you a photo of is just below the Stop and Shop parking lot next to that dental office, that's right before Villa Avenue. So that's just the feature of it. This grant, this additional expenditure that we're here tonight to ask is $1,448,950. Of that amount, 337,000 is additional lots of money, which is 100% funded. 889,560 of the total, 1.4 million would be reimbursed to the town. So the additional cost for this project is additional $222,390, which is, when you add it with the original grant that we've received previously, the total cost for the entire project is 462,000, which is just 13% of the total cost of this project that we're getting. It's kind of complicated because one grant is 100% reimbursable, one is 80%. So we tried to break it out in the spreadsheet that you received, I think in your packet. If I explain that?
No, you did good. I think the... Thank you for the breakout. First of all, aside from your normal duties as senior civil engineer, the, I just want to thank you and, and Mr. Hurley for taking time to go through the different forms of grants, the different types of funding, to minimize the cost to the town for this entire project. And I think that you've gotten it down to 13%, which we probably don't want to say out loud too much.
Right.
But you've done a phenomenal job. We certainly don't want the state hearing and the feds hearing that we got it down to that low, but I definitely want to thank you for what you've done from a financing side, which is not something we typically associate with engineering. But your financial engineering has been superb, so thank you very much for that. Any comments from the board?
Are the light posts already there?
No. The light posts are going to be new light posts. Decorative type, probably the colonial style that you see down in downtown area, I would imagine.
So this is, this whole picture is the, the total, 1.49?
This is just one little section, this is just the pocket park. The 1.4 million is going to get you from Brentwood up to Villa Avenue.
I was going to say, that's a lot for 1.49.
And that area hasn't been improved, that whole corridor, it's, it's, you know, it's just been left, left behind for many years.
It's much needed, no question about it.
It's a chance to...
And that is one of the gateways to Fairfield.
It's a gateway to Fairfield, it's going to be nice. Mm-hmm.
All right. Any further questions from the board?
No. The only question I had is, if I'm looking at the map correctly, this looks like the area, it's what, this is going to cover the area where the former car dealership is, right?
Across the street from the former car dealership.
Across the street.
Right. And that will be included as well. This is just a little, these pocket parks are being created to green up, to invite, you know, to encourage people just to sit. It's a little park. You know, they, they could hang out there, they could, you know, if they're waiting for a bus, I don't know if there's a bus stop there, but there's a rain garden feature here, there's like a bioswale, there's a nice little sidewalk. And it's green right now, it's just either, it's overgrown.
Yeah, right.
It's paved, so this is the...
It's pretty rocky, yeah.
Yeah, it is.
On the other side of the street where the former car dealership is, what is the plan for that side of the street, or is there not?
There is a plan for that side of the street. I don't have it in front of me accessible, but...
Okay.
It's most likely going to have some brick pavers between the, the gutter of the road and the sidewalk. The sidewalk will be improved, more lighting, that type of thing. Trees, tree trees.